Good evening, everyone. We're going to call to order the regular city council meeting for October 19th, 2022. I would ask that all stand for the pledge of allegiance and we'll have invocation by Old Lady McDowell. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord God, we thank you for blessing us to see another day. We ask you, Lord, to come into our council chamber, bless us as we can do our business or problem. And everything that we do, it is done in your name and recently been ordained, in Jesus' name, my prayer. Amen.
Amen.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Al Powell.
Here.
Alden Lady McDowell.
Present.
Alderman Jones.
Present.
Alder Lady Hampton Hauser.
Present.
Alderman Baron.
Present.
We have a call.
All right, we're going to skip down to authorization claims of the county. The minutes will be over with the next regular council meeting. Authorization claims of the county's buildings.
Yes, Mayor Al Powell.
Yes.
I make a motion that we approve the authorizations and claim list for October 19th, 2022, which reads as follows. Four hundred seventeen thousand, one hundred eighty-seven cents.
One hundred two hundred thousand, sixteen thousand, seventy-three cents.
We have solid waste at one hundred eleven thousand, eighty-five dollars and ninety-five cents. Fuel, two hundred seventeen dollars and ninety-two cents. We have Markham City Living Contract, thirty thousand, one hundred and eighty-three dollars and fifty-six cents. Roller rent, four hundred and forty dollars and twenty-three cents.
We have two sixty highway, three thousand, seven hundred dollars.
We also have Jevitt Business Park, twenty-two thousand, three dollars and sixty-five cents, which gives us a total of seven hundred ninety-eight thousand, eight hundred and thirty-five dollars and seventy-two cents. With one manual check for seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars, which give us a grand total of seven hundred and ninety-nine dollars, five hundred, seven hundred ninety-nine thousand, five hundred and ninety-four dollars and seventy-two cents.
Second. Motion by Old Lady Hampton, second by Old Lady Baron for your list authorization claim. Question? Roll call.
Alder Lady Hampton Hauser.
Yes.
Alderman Baron.
Yes.
Alder Lady McDowell.
Yes.
Alderman Jones.
Yes.
Motion carry.
We'll go to the city attorney's report.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council and members of the public would expect to the city attorney's report. It appears under eight. We start off with eight A of proposed ordinance updating mitigation rates for the deployment of emergency and non-emergency services by the city of Markham Fire Department.
Mayor Al Powell.
Yes.
All right, Mr. Quinn. Motion that we waive the reading of ordinance number twenty-two dash zero dash two three four one, updating mitigation rates for the deployment of emergency and non-emergency services by the city of Markham Fire Department.
Second. Motion by Old Lady Baron, second by Old Lady Hampton for waiving the reading for ordinance updating mitigation rates for deployment of emergency and non-emergency services by the city of Markham Fire Department. Roll call.
Alder Lady McDowell.
Yes.
Alder Lady Hampton Hauser.
Yes.
Alderman Baron.
Yes.
Alderman Jones.
Yes.
Motion carry.
Mayor Al Powell, I make a motion that we approve ordinance number twenty-two dash zero dash two three four one, updating mitigation rates for the deployment of emergency and non-emergency services by the city of Markham Fire Department.
Second. Motion by Old Lady Baron, second by Old Lady Hampton for approval of ordinance updating mitigation rates for deployment of emergency and non-emergency services by the city of Markham Fire Department. Question? Roll call.
Alderman Jones.
No.
Alder Lady Hampton Hauser.
Yes.
Alder Lady McDowell.
Yes.
Alderman Baron.
Yes.
Motion carry.
All right, next we have under eight B, a proposed ordinance authorizing the issuance of taxable tax anticipation warrants in anticipation of the collection of taxes levied for the year 2021 by the city council of the city of Markham Cook County for corporate purposes directing the county treasurer and ex-official county collector of the county of Cook, Illinois to deposit amounts collected from said taxes directly into a tax fund held by a tax escrow and authorizing the sale of said warrants to the county of Cook, Illinois.
Mayor Al Powell.
Yes.
I make a motion that we waive the reading ordinance numbers. This will be twenty-two dash zero dash two three four two in ordinance authorizing the issuance of taxable tax anticipation warrants in anticipation of the collection of tax levy for the year 2021 by the city council and the city of Markham Cook County, Illinois for corporate purposes directing the county treasurer and ex-official county collector of the Cook, of the county of Cook, Illinois to deposit amounts collected from said taxes directly into the funds held by the tax escrow agent and authorizing the sale of the, sale and the said warrants of the county of Cook County, county of Cook, Illinois.
Second. Motion by Old Lady Hampton, second by Old Lady Baron to waive the reading for consideration of ordinance authorizing issuing the sale of corporate purpose tax anticipation warrants as read. Roll call.
Alderman Baron.
Yes.
Alder Lady McDowell.
Yes.
Alder McDowell.
Yes.
Alder Lady Hampton Hauser.
Yes. Motion carry. Mayor Al Powell.
Yes.
I make a motion that we approve ordinance number twenty-two dash zero dash two three four two in ordinance authorizing the issuance of taxable tax anticipation warrants in anticipation of the collection of taxes levied for the year 2021 by the city council and of the city of Markham Cook County, Illinois for corporate purposes directing the county treasurer and ex-official county collectors of the county of Cook, Illinois to deposit amounts collected from said taxes directly into the funds held by the tax escrow agent and authorizing the sale of said warrants to the county of Cook, Illinois.
Second. Motion by Old Lady Hampton, second by Old Lady Baron for approval of ordinance consideration of authorizing the issue of the sale of corporate purposes tax anticipation, anticipation warrants as read. Question? Roll call.
Alderman Baron.
Yes.
Alder, Alder Lady Hampton Hauser.
Yes. Alder Lady McDowell.
Yes.
Alderman Jones.
Yes.
Motion carry.
Next we have under eight C, proposed ordinance authorizing the issuance of taxable tax anticipation warrants in anticipation of the collection of taxes levied for the year 2021 by the city council and the city of Markham Cook County, Illinois for police protection purposes directing the county treasurer and ex-official county collector of the county of Cook, Illinois to deposit amounts collected from said taxes directly into a fund held by a tax escrow agent and authorizing the sale of said warrants to the county of Cook, Illinois.
Mayor Al Powell.
Yes.
I make a motion that we waive the reading of ordinance number twenty-two dash zero dash two three four three in ordinance authorizing the issuance of taxable tax anticipation warrants in anticipation of the collection of taxes levied for the year 2022 by the city council and of the city of Markham Cook County, Illinois for fire protection purposes directing the county treasurer and ex-official county collector of the county of Cook, Illinois to deposit amounts collected from said taxes directly into funds held by a tax escrow agent and authorizing the sale of said warrants to the county of Cook, Illinois. Okay, second.
Motion by Old Lady Hampton, second by Old Lady McDowell.
She read the wrong one.
Hmm? I read the wrong.
Yeah.
Just to change the word protection to police protection.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Police. Oh, I'm sorry, police protection.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Motion by Old Lady Hampton, second by Old Lady McDowell for waiving the reading for consideration of the ordinance authorizing the issuing sale of police protection purposes tax anticipation warrants as read. Roll call.
Alder Lady Hampton Hauser.
Yes.
Alder Lady McDowell.
Yes.
Alderman Jones.
Yes.
Alderman Baron.
Yes.
Motion carry. Mayor Al Powell.
Yes.
I make a motion that we approve ordinance number twenty-two dash zero dash two three four three in ordinance authorizing the issuance of taxable tax anticipation warrants in anticipation of the collection of taxes levy for the year 2021 by the city council of the city of Markham Cook County, Illinois for police protection purposes directing the county treasurer and ex-official county collectors of the county of Cook, Illinois to deposit amounts collected from said taxes directly into the funds held by a tax escrow agent and authorizing the sale and said warrants to the county of Cook, Illinois.
Motion by Old Lady Hampton, second by Old Lady Baron for approval of ordinance considering the authorizing and issue of sale of, of police protection purposes tax anticipation warrants as read. Question? Roll call.
Alderman Jones.
Yes.
Alder Lady Hampton Hauser.
Yes.
Alderman Baron.
Yes.
Alder Lady McDowell.
Yes.
Motion carry.
Next we have under eight C, I'm sorry, eight D, eight D, proposed ordinance authorizing the issuance of taxable tax anticipation warrants in anticipation of the collection of taxes levied for the year 2021 by the city council and the city of Markham Cook County, Illinois for fire protection purposes directing the county treasurer and ex-official county collector of the county of Cook, Illinois to deposit amounts collected from said taxes directly into a fund held by a tax escrow agent and authorizing the sale of said warrants to the county of Cook, Illinois.
Mayor Al Powell.
Yes.
I make a motion that we waive the reading of ordinance number twenty-five dash zero dash three four four in ordinance authorization, the issuance of taxable tax anticipation warrants in anticipation of the collection of taxes levied for the year 2021 by the city council of the city of Markham Cook County, Illinois for fire protection purposes directing the county treasurer and ex-official county collector of the county of Cook, Illinois to deposit amounts collected from said taxes directly into the funds held by tax escrow agent and authorizing the sale of said warrants to the county of Cook, Illinois.
Second. Motion by Old Lady Hampton, second by Old Lady Baron to waive the reading for consideration of ordinance authorizing the issue and sale of fire protection purposes tax anticipation warrants as read. Roll call.
Alderman Baron.
Yes.
Alder Lady Hampton Hauser.
Yes.
Alderman Jones.
Yes.
Alder Lady McDowell.
Yes.
Motion carry. Mayor Al Powell.
Yes.
I make a motion that we approve ordinance number twenty-two dash zero dash two three four four in ordinance authorizing the issuance of taxable tax anticipation warrants in anticipation of the collection of taxes levy for the year 2021 by the city council of the city of Markham Cook County, Illinois for fire protection purposes directing the county treasurer and ex-official county collectors of the county of Cook, Illinois to deposit amounts collected from said taxes directly into a fund held by the tax escrow agent and authorizing the sale of the said warrants to the county of Cook, Illinois.
Second. Motion by Old Lady Hampton, second by Old Lady Baron for approval of ordinance in consideration authorizing the issue and sale of fire protection purposes tax anticipation warrants as read. Question?
Yes.
Yes.
This ordinance and the other two previous ones, this all has to do with the county treasurer and his or tax bill settlement stuff, right?
Correct.
All right.
Is that correct, Mr. Treacher?
Yes.
With that, roll call.
Alder Lady Hampton Hauser.
Yes.
Alder Lady McDowell.
Yes.
Alderman Baron.
Yes.
Alderman Jones.
Yes.
Motion carry.
Next we have under eight H, land development. I'd ask you to take your time, approximately ten minutes to start the next session of land development. Welcome to the city council.
Thank you. One moment, you can see the city council report. Good evening.
Good evening. First, I'd just like to say, last week, I attended the Illinois Municipal Clerks of Illinois Institute and Training Academy from Sunday through Friday. Clerks all over the state of Illinois. It was very informative with many updates, clerks from seasoned clerks with a lot of knowledge to share. It was also wonderful to meet various clerks from Illinois to form relationships within the world of clerking. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for allowing, allowing me to attend this event. Progress will be forthcoming in the clerk's office in the city of Markham. Again, thank you. Okay, moving on. That's for business licensees this season. The first one is Q line Logistics located at 2222 West 162nd Street in Markham. The owner.
Are they on the line? Do you know, I think.
Yeah, this is, this is Connor Quinn.
Is there a motion open the floor to?
I make a motion, welcome to the floor. Q line Logistics Corp.
Hi, Mr., oh, I'm sorry, all favor.
Hi.
All right, thank you, good. Mr. Quinn, good evening. Would you mind just telling the city council this evening a little bit about your business and we will make some determination about your licensing?
Yes, no problem. Good evening. My business is a logistics business. We run local trucking, handling shipping containers locally in the Chicago area. So work with importer exporters. We, like you said, we're at 2222 West 162nd Street and we've got, we employ eight drivers and one officer.
Okay, that's, Old Lady McDowell, is that your area?
Yes, it is. You said you employ eight drivers and I didn't hear the last part.
Yeah, eight drivers and a, one officer in Florida.
I have a question. Have you, you actually obtained this land or you leasing it or?
Yeah, it's a, it's a lease from Ameriton International, the company that owns the premises. They, they're a tin exporter, one of our customers.
So approximately, how many vehicles do you have?
Eight.
Eight? So would they, they be parked on this particular property as well?
That's correct.
Any other questions?
Hope to be office hours is different. They had six AM to five PM. But Quinn, when I went out there to see you the other day, you said from seven to three, correct?
Yeah, so the, the yard is secure, the plant is open for operation seven to three. Of course, we have drivers that work longer than those hours. While they're out, the, the yard is closed. They've got access to the, you know, the pavement portion, but not the building. So the gate locked from seven in the morning until three in the afternoon.
So have you, so have you, I'm sorry. So have you already been running or you have a lease agreement with this particular property owner?
That is correct, yeah. We, we were originally, I managed the business through them, working, working under Ameriton and we've grown and now, you know, trying to get an application to be a separate entity for, for Q line Logistics.
Approximately how many square footage do you actually rent from there, lease from there?
Um, it's a small, you know, a couple of desks, maybe, I don't know.
No, as far as your vehicles.
Side of the building and then.
As far as your vehicles.
The vehicles, yeah, it would be the, they take up, I'm not sure, square footage, but it, it would take up maybe a third of that, that lot.
What's your maximum weight that you'll be pulling or carrying back and forth?
Uh, maximum weight is eighty thousand.
That's approximately what you'll be pulling as well, as far as from the railroad, your containers?
Yeah, correct. That's the, the maximum legal weight that we can haul on the highways, the, the load plus the, you know, tractor trailer.
Will any of this be hazmat material?
No, it will not.
Any liquids?
Nope.
No hazmat liquids or liquids at all?
No.
I have two questions. My first question is, so when you park this, it'll be on gravel, dirt? Where would it be parked, this location? Where would it be parked?
The lot is paved, it's all asphalt.
Okay. When they're parked, would they be, I'd say it would be empty.
Uh, it's a mixture of both. So the, the customer will be loading containers out of the docks at that, at that site, but the occasional time where a container is either empty or loaded will be stored. If a, you know, driver couldn't make delivery, they'll be stored in that yard for the, you know, going day.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions?
No.
Okay, is there a motion to close the floor?
I make a motion, we close the floor to Q line.
Okay, I'll tell you. Okay, councilors, ladies this evening for licensure for Q line logistic corp.
I make a motion that we grant Q line logistic corp a business license.
Second. Motion by Old Lady McDowell, second by Old Lady Baron to grant business license for Q line logistic corp. Questions and, so, roll call.
Alder Lady McDowell.
Yes.
Alderman Jones.
Yes.
Alder Lady Hampton Hauser.
No.
Alderman Baron.
Yes.
Motion carry. The next business license is Corona Home Contractors LLC located at 3555 West 155th Street in Markham. And the owner is Francisco. This is a home-based business.
Online or here?
Yes, we're here.
Oh, good, okay. Is there a motion open the floor?
I make a motion that we open the floor to Corona Home Contractors LLC.
Second.
All favor.
Hi.
Okay. Francisco Corona, good evening to Corona Home Contractors. If you would, just tell us briefly a little bit about your at-home business, or base, home-based business and we'll take, we'll get some, have some questions as well.
Sure, I'm going to speak for Francisco, I'm his wife. His English is not a hundred percent, if that's okay?
That's fine.
Francisco, hello. Yeah, okay. He is a self-employed subcontractor, that's what the business is. So he just registered his business as an LLC, so he could be subcontracted by other companies. He provides construction services as far as roofing, installing roofing, siding, gutters, fascia, all the exterior on, on homes, residential homes. But he is mostly working at other locations. He just needed the business register so he could get paid and subcontracted.
Okay, Alderman Baron, I think you.
I, I actually did speak to Mr. Corona. I was only concerned about the storage of material and all the materials that they're gonna store will be in their garage. The only thing that is viewable to the neighborhood will be the ladders on his truck.
Any other questions, council?
What size vehicle?
What size truck?
Um, it's a E two fifty.
E two fifteen.
Uh, it's a van, like a work van, E two fifty.
And he's got ladder.
F two fifty.
All right, is there a motion to close the floor?
A motion to close the floor to Corona Home Contractors LLC.
Second.
All favor.
Hi.
Okay, I said it. Um, also, would you please, if you can get this.
Mayor, I make a motion that we grant Corona Home Contractors LLC business questions.
Motion by Old Lady Baron, second by Old Lady McDowell, approval of business license for Corona Home Contractors LLC.
Mayor?
Yes.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
All right. How flammable are these things? You know, I see shingles and paint, you know, chemicals. Is that flammable? Is that, you know, a flammable problem? You know, it's like having tires in a, in a garage. I mean, how, would that be a problem with our inspectors? I mean, you see that being a problem, Baron or anyone?
Well, let's see.
Hazardous materials, that's. Are they hazardous material?
Well, it looks like what's listed here, the roofing shingles, I guess, you know. The only thing that appears to be flammable is the paint, that I can see five gallons.
Five gallons, okay. How many gallons is he keeping in the garage? Mister, can you tell us, how many gallons are you keeping in the garage?
Of paint?
Yes.
De pintura.
No. We're used, no. We're used paint.
Me dijiste que le pusieron pintura.
Oh, no, it can, no.
No. He says we have no paint. I don't know why he wrote that down.
Oh, so no paint would be.
No.
Okay.
It's really like nails and the tools, like, like work tools and then the shingles.
Okay, all right.
Is it okay?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I have a question, so, the roll call.
Alder Lady McDowell.
Yes.
Alderman Baron.
Yes.
Alder Lady Hampton Hauser.
Yes.
Alderman Jones.
Yes.
Motion carry.
Okay, Mr. Quinn, you can see the building department tomorrow and this Corona, you can tell the department to grow from life.
Thank you.
But you don't have to stand in line if you want.
Thank you.
We'll move on.
M and L Auto Repair Enterprises, Inc., located at 3903 West 166 Place and the business owner is Muslim Abdulship.
Okay, um.
I make a motion.
They're, they're on line.
So M and L Auto Repair Enterprises.
Second.
All favor.
Hi.
Let's have a good evening, M and L Auto Repair Enterprise. Would you please tell the city council this evening a little bit about your business and we'll have some questions for you as well tonight.
Hello, how are you, everybody? We have like a really small business, me and my friend. We, we just bring cars from the auction and we put them back to the auction. We don't have anything for the, six, like cars and we put them back to the auction. That's all what we do.
So.
This is by you only?
It is, I was, I, I was in this location. Apparently, they. It is. I was, I, I was in this location, um, apparently they, uh, find cars that go through the auction, uh, they've got a, uh, a work area that will probably house six to seven cars inside. They've got parking on the side of their building for six. Um, he had four cars in there when I made my visit and he had about four cars on the side. Uh, they bring them in, they go through all any repairs that need to be made and then they sell the cars.
So where would they be selling the cars at? Where would they be selling these vehicles?
Uh, I guess it'd go back to the auction. I mean, he doesn't have, there's no place over there, so I don't.
Does he have a CO tax number?
According to this. I said, just saying repair according to this, not sales.
Yeah, well, actually, we don't, we don't make any sales. We just like repair the cars and just like then we do transportation back to the auction and then we don't do any sales in here, like nothing we, yeah.
So approximately how many vehicles at one time do you think would be on this location?
Usually like we have a round, like, we, like, honestly, not, not just because, um, the, the efforts, even though the budget, like the maximum thing we could just like get like five to six cars at the time. Then we fix them and then we send them back to the auction, then we get like six back. That's, that's how we always work.
Any other questions, council?
So all these particular vehicles, what, what size car hauler do you have? What size car hauler?
I'm sorry.
Well, how many cars can you haul at one time?
Oh, inside, inside the store, we could hold four, uh, four to five.
No, transporting, transporting.
It's.
How many vehicles can you transport to your location at one time?
At one time, usually we do like two, two cars. That's it. At, at the time, only two.
Two cars at a time?
Yes.
So where do you park this trailer when you're not utilizing it?
I don't have a trailer. I have a, I have a, a tow truck, uh, guy. He, he takes the cars and he brings them to me. Like, I don't, I, I don't do any.
Oh, okay. So you utilize someone else for that service?
Yes. Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, is there a motion to close the floor?
Make a motion that we close the floor to M and L Auto Repair Enterprises.
So.
On favor?
Aye.
I can add a quick to the council, M and L Auto Repair.
I make a motion that we grant M and L Auto Repair Enterprises a business license.
Motion by Alderman Baron, second by old lady McDowell, for approval of business license for M and L Auto Repair Enterprises. We satisfied questions, we'll go to real.
Alderman Baron?
Yes.
Other lady McDowell?
Yes.
Alderman Jones?
Yes.
Other lady Hampton Hauser?
Yes.
Motion carry.
Okay, um, Mr., um, Mr. M and L saying, see the building department about your licensure tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Sculpting Studio, and I believe, are they here?
Yeah.
Okay, very, want to look the floor to.
I make them. This guy is.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Book of preparation, book of license.
Good evening, um, God is Sculpting Studio.
To me.
If you would, uh, just tell the, the council tonight a little bit about your business and, um, we'll have some questions as well. You're Mr. Augens?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
So this is for, I'm gonna start off doing like lady like a weight loss or lady in. And try to work our way to doing like, uh, facial, um, lashes, different, different things. So the weight loss is, uh, is lazy like those, nothing, uh, surgical or anything like that. It, it helps lose weight. I was at that baby and I started out born day on myself and I was a hundred and ninety-one pounds. I dropped in two weeks thirteen pounds and no longer train, insulin or anything. So I know like in the community, it's a lot of or something, you know, my house, you might come back, so I got idea of.
So for this, do you need some kind of like, um, training or certificates?
Only thing you need is a certification for body control.
Do you have that?
So I'm not the one that's gonna actually do it. I wanna have other people. I have a brother that comes in and she, that's what I'm doing. She's gonna come in and do the body control. And then I'm gonna work my way until finding someone to do like facials, makeup. And I wanted to try like on a side person, so much for ladies to come and relax and enjoy their day.
Okay, um.
So you're in space?
Yeah.
Okay, are you, um, FDA approved, certified?
No, you don't have to.
Okay, cause when I met you, when I met, um, this week, um, you mentioned also you're gonna be doing shakes, um, health food shakes.
Yeah, so that was something that we were thinking about, but I don't think I am gonna do that. I'm more focused now on like the ladies of like, oh, uh, facial, stuff like that, like a beauty bar.
Okay, um.
Well, let me just, um, jump into help out a little, cause you, you don't have any other location that you've worked at, cause this is you?
Yeah, I have, like, I have a cousin that have one and that's where I started off at, with sound, so lose weight.
Okay, um, so they, they have a location, it's not your location?
No.
Okay, um, Mr. Champion, um, I, I guess I was gonna ask, I know that these other businesses had some form of a plan that we usually have gone through.
That's correct.
Um, it sounds like they probably could use a little bit of that.
Okay.
Um, maybe we could, could, that might satisfy some of that putting like the, um, the, uh, the order.
Okay.
Because you'll, you'll need that to get out the gate, I would think, for the council to really be able to legitimately vote. Um, or they could vote anyway, but to make sure you have some licensure included with this, what we have, cause this is all we have. We don't have, we don't have anything to, that, that gives you licensing to do it.
So I'm not the person that's gonna do it at all.
Right, but we need that person who's gonna do it, that somebody who's gonna be, you know, committed to this or we can take the committed to doing this. That would help.
Correct.
So however, whatever your, your position, but I know that we can probably help you put some of that together. Um, I'd be a little interested to know how the layout is myself, uh, in this, you know, in the spa itself, how it's laid out. Uh, cause I don't think we received any of that, uh, what the plan or the layout is for the, the bill is most of these places. Did, did you see any of that when you went?
No, the only thing he did give me, um, just his business plan. Um, he gave that to me. I met you, my name? Yeah, and he gave me the business plan. I went through the area of, what you have, there was no license attached to this, uh. You're not FDA certified.
I don't think they need that.
So you don't need that at all?
Not, not unless you're gonna do something with food, is that what you're, you're referring to?
But, but aren't these, these are not her employees, they're subcontractors.
She's gonna subcontract after this, it appears, yeah, which is fine, but, um, and that's good that you have a plan, cause we didn't see that.
So when we first came in, they, they text us those applications, the business plan and the LLC and the P and we get it from all.
Okay, I don't know why we did not. I, I remember this from a while back, cause you put this in. It's been, it's been a while. This, this goes back to April, the draft picture. It's been a long time. So I remember seeing this, but I just don't remember seeing this. It's a totally documentation. I've talked with the building department about it and it just, you know, we didn't talk about it anymore. Um, so, um, if, if it's, if it's all there, um, you know, if you all wanna pass any contingency or I don't know what you wanna do.
Mayor?
I have to copy, uh, the, uh, LLC, I have to copy, uh, the E and.
That part's okay. Yeah, I'm sure we got, I'm sure that's somewhere. I just don't remember the, the layout of the plan for the, you know, for the, the business. Can I see what you asked? I don't have the labor time, but. Okay. Yeah. Okay, um, Mr. Champion's indicating that he said he could sidebar with him to see what he can do to package this up better for them. Um, to make sure that, cause even the attorney mentioned about copy, you're gonna do copy, you're gonna have some licenses with that too. Right, so.
I just, I just wanted to say, mayor, I did get an opportunity to actually visit the area, uh, where they're going to actually be, uh, hopefully they'll be for their business or whatever and, and, and the plan is good. I think, like you stated, once they finish getting all the criteria, the paperwork that's required, I think it's gonna be an awesome, awesome little location. So I did get an opportunity to speak to them worldwide in reference to that, so.
Okay, well.
Can we hold off on this until further?
Yeah, I mean, we can, we, you know, you, you evidently got some support here. We just wanna package this up with, I mean, since April, it was a couple more minutes, right? Just to do it right, okay? Um, so here with Mr. Champion, that, before you leave tonight.
Yeah, and, and, and just one question. Do you have any information or any paperwork from the Illinois Department of Financial Professional Regulations? Okay, all right, yeah, we're definitely talking. All right, great, right?
Okay, so he'll work with you this weekend, you know, get it all straightened out. Yeah, I might, I might be over there myself. Okay. Is there a motion to close the?
I make a motion. Second.
Okay, on favor? Thank you, um, very much. And Mr. Champion, see him before we leave tonight, so we can get things together with him, okay?
That's all I have this evening.
Okay, all right, very good. Thank you, Madam clerk, little experience with court, just a couple of items, uh, this mission tonight. Um, uh, I, I always kinda give a little bit of a, uh, a status about what we're trying to do around City Hall. And of course, I had a big meeting yesterday, uh, as, um, I do kind of time with the departments. I had the whole public works department in here as a whole, the whole department here in this council room. Uh, we have these conversations, uh, about what we're doing and why we're doing it. Just to reiterate the direction and the vision of what, where we're heading and what we should be doing out there. And so, um, every once in a while, you know, you still make sure that, uh, the organization does not get complacent. And so we get together and this is what we do. So I think it was very helpful and, uh, good to let the public know that I think that we have a very superior public works department. I think it's just getting, getting better and better. Um, one of the things that I've said to them since I've been in office, a lot of people thought the fire department would get all kinds of attention, but, um, the, the fire chief actually told me one day he felt like he's being penalized. It's like doing the federal block. Because I don't get the fire department as much as attention. Uh, here in the last, um, probably six, eight months, we've done better. By fire police and we see the vehicles and way that the officers are handling themselves and the way that they control it. So there's improvement. Same thing with code and building. I met with them, uh, last month, uh, I met with them individually and, well, not individually, but but I mean, that department, because you have building and you have code, so I met with code as well and, uh, was a very community unit.
Yes, yeah.
Um, and I think they left pretty reasonably enlightened about what we should be doing out there. Um, and I, I think that is important that the employees understand. I may make it clear, just as we say on the diets, that, you know, we're in the business of, um, making people's lives better. That's why we're here to serve. You know, that, that, otherwise we have no business being. And the same for them, they, they don't need to work and govern. I told the public work guys, if you're not here to serve the public, then you're in the wrong places of public service. And so that's what they're here for and that's what, uh, they understand that. I, I only have one, one person that didn't raise their hand about liking their job, but, but that's because I think he's just a little young. He doesn't know what he wants to do. So, so we, I, I, I asked, I asked, why didn't he raise his hand when about liking his job? And he said, well, I think he's just a little, he doesn't know what he wants to do. Well, he needs to figure it out why he's here, so. But I just wanted to share that, um, that we're trying to impart some good things into employees about what they do for the community and why, why they're here with the purpose. And that's, uh, always been at the top of my list of making sure that, uh, people understand what we're doing and the visioning. Okay, I know that we're preparing for the, the fall and the, the winter months, uh, with vehicles and different things that department-wide. Uh, we'll be, uh, gearing up for the, the fall season, uh, as, as it comes about. Uh, please, uh, public, uh, manage, uh, your lead who will help you along with that, but we don't want the stone brains and that to get all backed up. So I hope that people are bagging things up and keeping up with leads as well around the property, so. All right, with that, we'll go to the city administrator's report.
Uh, thank you, mayor. Um, I didn't hear you mention the water tower, man.
No, I didn't.
Yeah, I mean, you know.
But you mentioned it.
Okay, all right. Well, I, I don't know if anybody, uh, noticed that the water tower got painted. And I'm thinking we should put some type of spotlight on it, man, to have it illuminated at night. Uh, but, but those are just some of the changes, you know, those are just sort of aesthetics, but the city is truly moving in the right direction and really, um, happy and really, uh, prideful of, um, this administration here and the direction and the mayor's vision. And I know that, um, on the water tower, it says the city will have vision. And a lot of people have sight, but they don't have vision. And I just wanna thank the mayor for having some vision and to, uh, you know, bring forth projects like this and, and just the quality of life and helping out with schools, green infrastructure, technology and parks and all that. So I wanna give him and the city council all of applause. Yes, for that, because that's a, that's a big deal. Um, uh, there's a, there's a, there's a new opportunity that, that presented itself, so I just wanna, um, the Cook County, uh, released, um, a new grant. It's called the Source Grow Grant. Um, this is to assist small businesses that they recover from the pandemic. Uh, Cook County recently announced this, um, and during the month of October, uh, individuals are, uh, eligible to receive ten thousand dollars that do not have to be paid back. So I wanna make sure that you're clear on that. Um, these are, this particular funding is, um, um, is geared towards individuals that have had, um, hard times during the pandemic. Um, we have a Spanish and a English version that will be on our, uh, social platform and on our website. Um, there will be some, uh, technical assistance, uh, from the Southland Development Authority, um, on October twenty-fifth. And this will take place at ten AM through one PM at the Blue Island Public Light. And this will take place at ten AM through one PM at the Blue Island Public Library. Uh, once again, that's going to be on, on October twenty-fifth. And there's a phone number that you can call, seven zero eight four hundred seventy eighty-seven, or seven zero eight, um, four hundred seven three two six. That's seven zero eight four zero zero seven three two six, okay? Uh, please don't miss out on any small business looking, uh, for an opportunity to, uh, get ten thousand dollars. These kind of, this kind of funding doesn't come around often, but we want to make sure that small businesses take advantage of that. And there's a criteria, um, you have to, um. Be a profitable business. You have to have fewer than twenty full-time employees, and you have, um, you have to operate and conduct the business prior to twenty twenty. So I make sure that, um, the council, that you just, uh, information, that they can put it on their social media sites as well. So definitely take advantage of that. Um, also, Mayor, I want to bring up, um, um, Chief Genius to kind of talk about a community alert, um, so that, you know, the public can be aware of some things that are happening in the Canterbury area, okay?
That's fine.
Okay, and that concludes my report.
Nelson, you all found it?
Yes.
Alright, good evening, Chief. Um, this is a community alert that we put out Monday, um, in Canterbury area. Every house in Canterbury received one of these. Um, the best way I, uh, just read it and then explain a little more. It's delivered to every house by public works. They, uh, they help us along with this. This is Markham Police Community Alert. Markham Police Department is asking residents to help stop illegal activity. The past couple of weeks, there's been an increase in illegal dumping in our community. In Canterbury neighborhood, the illegal dumping is occurring at all hours, especially late night and early hours of the morning. It usually involves SUVs, sometimes pickup trucks, box trucks or dump trucks. Vacant houses and yard and driveways are places watched, and that's highlighted. Sometimes what looks like an old dump TV set is really a safe or a cash machine that has been taken in a serious crime in either downtown or other locations. You can help. Please watch for any suspicious vehicles or groups of people around your home or in your neighborhood, especially vacant houses. When you see anything unusual, please call us at nine one one. Please tell us the exact location, type of vehicle, color of vehicle. And if you can, provide us with a license plate number. We will get there as soon as possible. Please remember, if you see anything suspicious persons around your home or neighborhood, please call Markham Police at nine one one. Now, what prompted the police department to do this is we've been, uh, recovering a series of safes and cash machines that have been sold out of other locations, um, both from Skokie, um, they've been dumped in vacant houses, on their driveways, in their backyards. Uh, usually it's a citizen or a public works line. So, and then they call us. We put out a report for the entire electoral public area. And then we wait for responses to see who is missing it. Uh, and then we work with the local police departments to get it back, the fingerprints and the whatever. Um, we're, uh, talking about doing a, a pass course where other communities with this. Uh, over the last month, we've recovered over eleven safes and cash machines. They've all been taken virtually. Nobody's been hurt. But it is a problem. It is happening in Canterbury. Now, the information here is actually good for every. See some suspicious calls. That's what we're there for. Call nine one one. Give us as much information as you can. Don't put yourself in jeopardy, you know, just let us know. Look at that. They work with five, seven officers, sometimes more, all hours of the day and night. So this is a plea from the police department in the city. For everybody that lives here, please let us know what's happening. Find as much as we can on our own, but we do need help. And, and we will, we'll give them. We work very hard for the rest of the day. Mayor, you have any questions?
No, no, thank you, Chief. Uh, if, you know, great point. Um, two things I always say, you know, um, we, we didn't get picked by random. Um, where people are bringing these things not to have eleven, ten of them come to town. That means that someone's here. So it takes us to bring about that awareness and the police don't know, they can't do anything. So you, you let them know, you make a call, that's how we catch them. And we find them. And, and, you know, that's just how this works. So thank you for bringing up the council. You have any other questions?
And, please. You know, everybody has neighbors. It's our belief that these crew lives in the Canterbury area.
Yep.
And if you're neighbors with, with family or there's a lot of activity at night, you're looking for cars, pickup trucks, box trucks, and they're in the area, or you see guys congregating, they're at their dark or early morning hours, that's usually some kind of a problem. So what you might think is just a annoying neighbor could be much deeper. And we're looking forward to people letting us know if they know of any houses that are like that. That's a good thing.
Thank you. Alright, you go ahead, Al.
Um, also, you know, neighbors have cameras. And I think that as a community, we might want to get more involved with giving neighbors like those hunting cameras where they can put up in certain spots, where we can actually take footage of it. Because sometimes a neighbor don't want to say anything, but if you give them, say, hey, listen, we'll give you this hunting camera and put it up in your location, then we can catch them. Or we can catch a license plates. So, you know, I think we, we have to have some kind of commitment to them, saying, hey, listen, let's order a hundred of these. I mean, they, they hit in certain spots, so they already, they already telling where they're going to be. Let's give them a hunting camera, say, let's put this up. So we can catch them on, on camera.
Sure, Chief, uh, maybe something to work on. And, um, soon, I think, like, if, if contracts are becoming before the council and the mayor about what's called flag cameras. Um, it's a very sophisticated system. We're advocating purchases of about twenty of them. We can cover the whole city. And it's a very amazing law enforcement system. And hopefully we can have that before you and we can come for it. That would be a huge advantage to us and personally, I mean, other police department in the area. Because they're already up in Poleson, they're up in Harley, they're up in Hazelgrass. We're just starting.
And, and Mayor, just to add to that, and with, and with the smart poles that we're getting as well, that has the three sixty cameras as well and the license plate readers. So I think all of that, uh, you know, will help as well, Chief.
Have you got information else? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Alright, uh, we'll go over to, um, uh, automatic and more reports. Good evening, all of Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, to also piggyback on Derek Champion, uh, the water tower looks great, likes the colors. You know, and I'm, I'm glad that you all definitely, you know, kept your word without keeping on the colors and our logo and our name on it. I appreciate that. It looks good, you know, uh, it looks good driving down the street. You see it as soon as you cross the horizon, you know, City of Market. So, uh, great job of doing that. Um, um, on the last meeting, you spoke about the Amazon hiring day. I've been getting phone calls. What is the date of the hiring? Because people are asking.
Yeah, now, that's a good question. I forgot to bring that up. So Amazon had a conflict. I meant, I meant to announce an update. Amazon had a conflict with another event, so they wanted to reschedule it for next month. The Dirk, I mean, the date of the hiring.
Okay, can, can we please put that on our social media platforms so people can know, because that's been a real key concern, people trying to get into market of Amazon. And they see they run into hurdles.
Okay, yeah, I get it.
Um, yeah, I'm glad you had the needs of public works, because, uh, I've had a couple of phone calls about, um. Trees that need to be cut, and they say they've been reaching out to public works and administration and there's no response, you know. Um, how do we go about getting the, uh, the trees and they can set some sidewalks before the, before the season hits, about getting sidewalk repairs and tree repairs?
Unless you and I get together on the run away.
Okay.
Tomorrow.
Okay.
Tomorrow, yeah, because, um, definitely about the sidewalk, the trees, those guys over there, I guess, if they didn't call us.
Okay, because these trees are actually dead and they need to be cut down. They're really.
Yeah.
Alright.
So let's, let's talk tomorrow.
Okay. Also, ComEd is having a, uh, weatherization program. The last day is October twenty-eighth. All you have to do is give them a call, and they will come out and look at your house for weatherization. Um, if you get a chance, please give me a call, call my office or email me, uh, seven oh eight three three nine nineteen seventy-three, seven oh eight three three nine nineteen seventy-three. I'll give you the number to ComEd, or you'll come to my job at Bremen Township, and, um, tell them about the program. But the deadline is October twenty-eighth, to call in for the program. And they'll come out to your house to make sure that, you know, it's, uh, weather compliance or they help you out any way they can. It's not light heat, it's a different program, but the deadline is October twenty eighth to ComEd. Uh, and then last but not least, uh, kudos to the Markham Park, um, Halloween Hut, October twenty ninth to thirty-first. So bring your kids out to get the Halloween honey fest. It's really. They have. That's October twenty ninth to October thirty-first. That ends my report.
Okay. Good evening, all of the there.
Good evening, Mayor. Uh, my compliments to on the finished product of the water tower. Um, do we have Halloween hours for trick or treating?
Uh, yes, it's put on the website. Uh, Chief, uh, did you get it as well?
I, I did not.
Okay, I thought you got it. It was, I, sorry, I, I knew it was something like three to six.
Yeah, okay, I just, I, I got calls on it.
It was three to six, I believe. I don't know if anybody.
Alright, um, and I'd like to thank public works. Uh, they've, uh, they fixed up, uh, an area, uh, the hill cruffs in Central Park that was severely overgrown. Trees were fallen on the power branches. Uh, ComEd came out, uh, got the branches off the power lines. And, uh, the public works went in there and cleaned back some of the ditch. And then my understanding is you came by and looked at it and you had our grills put off. So, uh, it really came out nice. Uh, two of the residents there called me immediately, so they were very pleased with it. I've had a bunch of calls on speed bumps. Uh, I'm keeping a list. Uh, we're not putting any more out this year. Matter of fact, uh, the public works, when we start picking up the ones that are down, uh, they will, they would interfere with snow removal. So we will reinstall them next spring. We have more speed bumps, but there's just not enough time to put them down and then take them right back up. So, but we're going to install, um, hopefully, I think, maybe twenty to twenty-five in each ward. So that'll be really nice. Excellent. Oh, just, you know, the thing with Halloween, you know, the kids are going to be out and just, you know, be conscious of these kids. They don't think as fast as we do, and sometimes they do some silly things. So you just want to be on the alert in your neighborhood for these children. That's my report, then.
Thank you, all of the parents. Good evening, all lady heaven.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Congresswoman, President, and those who are online as well. Good evening, everyone. Uh, I'm just, we're gonna start off with, uh, with my board. Uh, since the redistributing, uh, remapping of our city, I've had the opportunity the last three Saturdays to actually be out, uh, in my new area, uh, knocking on doors, um, speaking directly with the residents, homeowners, and trying to make sure we can address their concerns. And I think their concerns are just like, uh, everyone else's concerns throughout the City of Markham. And it's about the easement, overgrowth, the abandoned homes. Uh, so I do feel that everybody is on the same page when it comes to that. So today I had an opportunity, uh, had a crew actually working on the easement, uh, on California. So that crew started today and will actually be over in that area for a while until the weather, uh, no longer permits us to actually continue to clean in those particular areas. I also had an opportunity to actually speak to some of the residents in another separate area that I have as well, which is a hundred sixty, six sixty-six block from Wood Street going back west to Dixie Highway. Um, concerns are the same as well, so we started over in that area as well as far as cleaning out the easement of, uh, Winchester and, uh, Honery, some parts of Honery. So we are diligently moving as fast as possible. But the areas that we're actually doing, I, I have to judge by the severity of the easements, because we do have some easements that have abandoned homes next to them, and the trees are dead and they're leaning all over onto the next property. So I've received many a phone calls from residents who are so upset because they feel that their easement should be, uh, actually done by now. And I have to honestly say, Mayor, and, and, and I'm, I'm very precise on what I say, but I have to be completely honest with the residents, which I always am. The easements are actually done according to the priority, not because you want it done today or tomorrow. Uh, we do have, uh, again, a lot of abandoned homes in our community, so we're trying to make sure that we address those first. Not to say that we haven't made a major dent in cleaning up our city, which we have. And we still have next year, the year after that as well to continue the improvements. So the support of the residents, the homeowners, uh, please be patient. We are working our way through that as well. I also want to say, uh, this Friday, um, I'll be working with Rick and Mike. We're actually doing a, uh, segment with Markham Perspective, uh, on Cancer Awareness Month. Uh, many people call it, uh, Breast Cancer Awareness Month, but more people say it's Cancer Awareness Month. So that means it doesn't matter what type of cancer. It's all recognized in this particular month. So we will be filming with individual survivors, CEOs of hospitals, oncologists, to give a whole perspective on what individuals actually go through and how we can move forward to support these individuals as well and, and, and prevent the maintenance, which is, which is important. So that will be on our access channel, that's the ComCats channel four, and U-verse will be on channel ninety-nine. And then it'll be up to Michael exactly how we want to extend that out. So please get an opportunity, uh, to watch that segment. Um, I'm not so sure exactly when Rick will actually have it on, but I'm pretty sure it'll be shortly afterwards. Uh, so please get an opportunity to, uh, watch that as well. I will be having another coffee soon, uh, I believe it will be in November. Not quite so sure exactly what day. But please, if you see the flyer on your door or mailbox on outside of the mailbox, please get an opportunity to read it and attend a meeting. Many individuals do not understand of what's going on in our community, so they have such a negative view about certain things until we start speaking to them, um, speaking to them in reference to what's going on with our community. I think it's so important that we educate individuals about how municipalities actually work. And I'm hoping that you all get an opportunity to come out when you ask a specific question, to get the correct answer. And I think it, it works for the benefit of us both, the, uh, city council, administration, and also the residents as well. So we more so on the same page. So please get an opportunity to come out when you see the flyers on the doors or the coffee sets. And then not only that, it gives you an opportunity to address your concern and for us to actually, or for me to actually find answers. And the question is, the main thing is to make sure we can find solutions. So please, again, please, you see the flyer on the door, please come out. Uh, Happy Halloween to those whom it applies to. Uh, again, to, um, piggybacking on Donovan Jones, the dates again for the.
Twenty ninth to thirty first.
Twenty ninth to the thirty first. Twenty ninth to the thirty first. Uh, that's the end of my report, Mayor.
Thank you, uh, all the ladies. It's been good evening, all ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and all residents that are present on tonight. The second ward report for this evening is as follows. On ten twelve, I received a phone call from our deputy chief informing me of car stealing that's taking place at a particular home on Winchester. This particular home, I won't give the address, but this particular home, for the last two nights in the same two weeks, they keep finding stolen vehicles at this particular home. Um, if you all have not been aware, um, they're stealing Kia cars. It's something within that car that they're stealing them, and they're taking apart off of that vehicle. Um, and they're dumping them here in Markham. Well, unfortunately, in my ward on Winchester, this one particular house, they keep finding all these stolen cars. So I I say all that to inform the residents, if you live next door to a vacant home, and you know no one lives there, and you see someone dumping vehicles, please pick up the phone and call nine one one. You do not have to give your information, just inform the police that something is going on at a vacant home next door to you and give the address. Um, also, um, Mayor, I want to thank you. I see some improvements in some of the streets that I was reporting the last two council meetings, so thank you, and we're still looking for some more improvement.
We're checking that.
Okay, also, on Stafford, thirty forty-nine Stafford, I received uh some complaints from residents. This is a vacant home, there is an old uh R and V in the driveway, and they're asking if there's any way we can have that vehicle towed. No one lives there, no one has lived there for years. They're seeing people go on that property dumping things in the back, and they said all kind of animals is running over there, so they're asking for help at that location. That address is thirty forty-nine Stafford. Um, also on Whipple, right around McDonald's and Popeyes, the house that's right next to McDonald's. I don't know if the water is bagging up in that house, but there's just water that's sitting in all the sewer holes, so it needs some attention. I did get some phone calls. Public Works went out there once, but something is going on, because there's just puddles of water that's standing there. And I did go over there, and I do see water kind of pouring all in that driveway of the house right next to McDonald's.
We'll check that out first thing.
And last for my report, I want to congratulate our library for our children, nature knock uh ribbon cutting that took place on yesterday. So I want to thank uh our director, who works very hard at our library, and her staff, and if you all have not had a chance and opportunity, please go to the library and look at that beautiful wall, and the um, the class that came from women.
District two twenty-eight.
District two twenty-eight, um, the art teacher was there, she's actually the one who actually drew up the designs, and it was a very nice ceremony. That's the end of my report.
All right, thank you, all the ladies. And now, move to the public session, we're voting.
Let me make a motion that we open the floor to the public.
So move.
I am, I am, good evening, public. If you are signed in, you can address the council tonight and uh go to the diet of the you have, prevent such drugs from being
Mr. Jack Harris.
Ladies and gentlemen. I have a few questions I would ask. I'm sorry, if you all know of local property, they could like the park, so let's talk less. I have a few questions I would ask. It's a vacant property that they stole between our hours, and the safety is a man in there who they're cleaning up the deal. We don't know what that's going on, it used to be a road, but it's obviously a road, and not being used, anything, they're wanting to know if we could use that part of it. Now, and the other thing I want to know, if our trailer park is going to make a purchase, so, you know, we put a trailer home and put that there for all, or see if they have a property right now, financial position, or office, or most people don't own, buy the bus, I guess, or those people or not. But I want to know if we pass the vacant property, and if it's first, so we put a trailer home there, that may And the property that's next door, I don't know, if it used to be a drive or a alley that they go, I mean, roll, they roll up to nothing for what we do, they kind of keep it clean, and nobody uses it. Is that possible that we could use that property? Because the vacant is not being used.
Um, I would say, because of the property, Mr. Harris, I would ask to, um, you know, we have to look at all this, what's involved, and whether you want to get, just, you know, get the information, so if we can look it over with you, and see what, you know, if it's something that's doable, or what do you want to check, or what do you want to do?
The what do I need to do?
You just do whatever information, let us know, you know, whatever it's the right to do, you know, we'll sit down. You know, you got all the information about the land and the property, and we'll sit down and we'll look it over with you. Champion, you can, you know, Mr. Harris, we can get you to get
We'll do it.
I I don't know if you know where that, we just want to do
You know, I'm 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 not
Not all this junk, it's just your area, right? Uh, I have to find out. Yeah, it is time, I was again, we'll we'll sit down and talk. Um, the the trailer matter, I I believe is something that we don't do. We got it in a couple places uh in town that uh had for many years. I think it's something we could visit uh with you as well, but we really weren't doing that. Um, and some people had them, and they had for many years already, this place. So, uh, but we can, we can just stroll without a good way, see if there's something suitable or not.
Three minutes.
That one, you're not quite, that's a lot of business there, and you put a lot of capital in, so it's Right, yeah, that's what we want to do. Some of the capital, we found three, there was a farm that was built, they were saying so. Time is running out, we got to go and put it in. So, pretty careful, y'all, we got
Let us know when you come up, and we'll meet with you about it.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, then, Mark, to the floor, the need
I make a motion, we close the floor to the public.
Say, on favor?
Aye.
Um, make a motion that we go into executive session for Let them know.
Oliver Jones?
Yes.
Officer Darren?
Yes.
Officer Lady, have some house, yes? Officer Lady McDowell?
Yes.
How's she here?
Okay. Will be your adjournment to go into the second session?
Well, we got to come back to regular session, Curts.
Oh, okay, uh, make a motion that we return everyone to our business. On
On favor? On favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Make a motion that we adjourn.
On favor?
Aye.
All right, good night, everybody.